Buenos dias, everyone. Good morning and welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The public hearing by the Committee on Maritime and Air Transportation, Parks Tourism, Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth and Senior Citizens is hereby called to order. Today is Friday, September 8, 2023, and the time now is 9:02 a.m. For the record, and in accordance with the open government law, notices for this hearing were sent on August 30th and again on September 1st. In addition, the hearing was noticed on the Guam Legislature website and the public notice website. Joining me here this afternoon, Senators Joanne Brown and Senator Tom Fisher. Sujus Masi colleagues for being here this morning. Before we proceed with the discussion, I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for those in attendance. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide the legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present written or oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or additional testimony. As may be desired by members of the committee, questions and testimony shall be confined to the nature of the agenda. The agenda is the appointment of Mr. Jesse G. Garcia to serve as a member of the Guam International Airport Authority Board of Directors. The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify to begin. Before speaking, individuals testifying shall first be recognized and state your name and position for the record. The order of questioning will begin with the panel of senators who shall complete their lines of questioning on this agenda item. At this time, personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted and removed from the room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room. The ABWANPAT International Airport Authority Guam was created by Public Law 13-57 as an autonomous agency of the government of Guam to own, maintain, and operate and develop airport facilities and properties. GIAA took over operations from the Department of Commerce in 1976, and since then, has been the island's only commercial airport supporting domestic and international air travel for passengers and cargo. GIAA, led by its Board of Directors and management, strive to ensure the safety and security of the traveling public, and is dedicated to maintaining a superior and reliable level of airport services for our island residents and tourists, and is committed to supporting the development of air linkages and facilities, which are integral parts of the island's current and future economic growth. At this time, I'd like to invite our Board of Directors, Mr. Brian Bamba, followed by our executive manager, former Senator John Canata, to provide their testimony before our nominee, Mr. Garcia. Mr. Bamba.
Good morning and thank you, Senator Shelton. Madam Legislative Secretary and honorable members of the Committee on Air Transportation, I proudly submit testimony today in full support of the reappointment of Mr. Jesse G. Garcia to the Board of Directors of the ABWANPAT International Airport Authority Guam. Mr. Garcia has been proactive on the board and its subcommittees, and is an active participant in policymaking decisions, discussions, and board decisions to award capital improvement projects and facilities maintenance and development. Having formerly served, most recently, as Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works, and also as a senior project manager with Black Construction Corporation, he is well versed with the critical nature of our work in master planning and capital improvement programs for our island's only civilian airport. Additionally, he brings valuable complement of knowledge with his history in law enforcement, and essential in understanding the regulatory safety and security issues that govern an airport environment. I have full confidence that Mr. Garcia, also known as Jesse John, will continue to be a valuable asset to our board. He has a combined knowledge and experience to keep the airport moving forward at a critical time in our airport's development. Your most favorable consideration and affirmation on this appointment is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Brian Bamba, Chairman, Board of Directors of the Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Bamba. Senator Canata.
Good morning, honorable senators of the 37 Guam Legislature, Senator Brown, Senator Taidegui, Senator Fisher, and of course, our oversight chair, Senator Amanda Shelton. Buenos dias, Madam Legislative Secretary and honorable members of the Committee on Air Transportation. I am proud to appear and testify before you today in full support of the reappointment of Mr. Jesse G. Garcia to the Board of Directors of the ABWANPAT International Airport Authority Guam. Jesse Garcia first joined the board in February of 2022, filling an unexpired term of former director Zenon E. Bellinger. Since that time, Director Garcia has contributed greatly to the board and exhibited leadership in the board capital improvement projects subcommittee. With his expansive career in the government and private sector, Jesse Garcia brings with him an acute awareness of government planning, capital improvement projects, procurement procedures, safety and law enforcement experiences, and has worked intimately with the federal regulatory agencies, such as the Federal Highway Administration and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. This experience is invaluable as the Board of Directors create policy and approve capital improvement programs, accept grant funding, and award invitations to bid and request for proposals for material, supplies, services, and professional contracts. During his one-and-a-half-year term on the GIA Board of Directors, he has expressed his own opinions at the board meetings that have proven insightful and beneficial to the authority. We fully endorse his reappointment to the GIA Board of Directors. I am confident that he will continue to serve the people of Guam as he has over the years with dedication and hard work. Respectfully submitted this eighth day of September, 2023, with respect to John M. Canata, Executive Manager, Guam Airport Authority.
Sujus Masi, Senator Canata. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Okay, I'd like to state for the record that we have other folks here in support of Mr. Garcia's nomination. We have Mrs. Tina Garcia. We have Mr. Raymond Mantenotia Fire Chief from the airport. Mr. Anthony Kiddichai from the airport. Ms. Marlene Ponalla from the airport, and the vice chair of the board as well, Mr. Bixopti. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Mr. Garcia.
Good morning, Chairperson Amanda Shelton, Senator Amanda Shelton, and members of the committee. It is my honor to appear before you this morning as an alumni through a full three-year term at the Board of Directors. As you know, I was appointed and confirmed to fill an unplanned board vacancy that occurred in 2022. Over the past year, I've learned a great deal about the aviation industry generally, particularly in the organizational and operational dynamics of our airport. Guam AB International Airport is more than a key transportation hub. It is a vital economic link to the business and industry, both locally and for the greater Micronesia region. Our airport brings together goods, people, benefits to Guam. Our neighbor is close by and throughout Asia. It plays a critical role in the security of our island and supporting the role of defense of our nation. During the past year, I've become privy to short-term, immediate, and long-term goals of the airport, including planned improvements to the main terminal building and adjacent properties. It became very clear in my tenure that there is a commitment on part of both the airport board and the management team to work together to grow GIA with our island for the benefit of the people. It is home to warehousing facilities, retail shops, and restaurants. It interacts and answers to the agencies, both local and federal. It is home to companies, both domestic and foreign. The airport provides direct employment to hundreds of people in positions which is critical to the airport operations and border tourism industry, and remains a source of indirect employment for hundreds more. All of this in support of its core mission, which is of course is a safe, efficient movement of passengers and cargo, cargo on dozens of arriving departing flights, 24/7, 24/7, 365 days a year. I believe good stewardship is about providing the way and means of management to keep the airport running and optimal performance while developing visionary policies, initiatives for the continued success of the future. It's been my privilege to serve on the GIA Board of Directors this past year. It would be my honor to do so for another three years. Thank you, and Sujus Masi.
Sujus Masi, Mr. Garcia. We'll begin with questions from the senators here today. Senator Fisher. Before you begin, I'd also like to recognize Senator Taidegui for joining us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I was looking at your resume, sir. It's very impressive. I really don't have any questions. I was just seeing that some 31 years of government service. Is that correct? And it is very impressive, Department of Public Works. You've been a construction manager on many different projects in your career, which is, of course, is necessary at the airport. So I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to highlight, you seem eminently qualified for the position. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Fisher. Senator Brown.
I think Mr. Garcia is doing very well to get by that well with Senator Fisher. You know, I have to tell you a story because I've known Jesse Garcia many years, and I've also known his wife many years. And I didn't know they were married to each other. I thought, wow, these two good people at some point found each other because, of course, I've had the opportunity to work with your mom when I first became senator 28 years ago. And she worked at my office together for several years, and I certainly appreciate looking back at those days, those early days when I was here. And the only time I found out the two of you were married was I went to a graduation invitation for your daughter, and then I realized they were in the same house. And so that's how I found out that Tina and Jesse Garcia were married to each other. And it's just one of those interesting moments. But I don't have any questions much for you. I see in your background, having worked at Johnson Control, you reference that you were involved in energy efficiency up at the Guam Airport Authority as part of your duties there, and a number of things. I think the fact that you were rehired back in the private sector, even though you were pulled back for a short time to DPW. Obviously, your skill sets are well valued by Black Construction to bring you back to work with them again. But what do you see in moving forward in your continued role on the board at the Guam Airport Authority? What would you like to see expand further or contribute in terms of your efforts to improve the operations and efficiency of the airport?
Basically, the operations of the airport, whatever happens up at the airport, I have background in most of the operations at the airport, to construction, to security. I feel I bring a lot of my knowledge to the airport to help out with the operations.
Do you see something more you'd like to see improved? Because obviously, with your background in construction, and we know that the airports just recently completed a major project up there in their expansion. What would you like to see that you feel you are going to be able to contribute and add on to the board, and certainly the enhancement and improvement of the airport authority?
There's still a lot of things at the airport that needs to be improved, and we're working on it with our other members and consultants that have been giving us information. And we take it and analyze the operations to make sure it will work.
And in your time that you've been there at the airport authority, how would you assess the airport's performance so far?
There's still some challenges that we're working on, and hopefully it can get better.
Well, I appreciate it. I know, Mr. Garcia, this is not the forum you care for very much. This is not your element. But in your element, I mean, we've been able to see all the things you can do. I mean, you're definitely, when they say you're a can-do person, I think a lot of people that know you would say that sums up Jesse Garcia because you are very resourceful. I mean, you can make things happen in the work that you do. And as I mentioned, I think the fact that Black Construction pulled you back is much to their benefit because the skill sets that you have and the experience that you have is not too many people walking around that have your capability. So you certainly have our continued support to serve on the airport board, and appreciate your interest in wanting to continue your public service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Taidegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to my colleagues, and especially to those who are here today to testify. Hafaday, Tina. This goes Tina, so good to see you, you know, and here supporting that you're allowing him to serve another, well, three years at least. Because Jesse, without the, you know, the support of your family, I question it because it takes away time from the home when you serve on the board, not just going to the meetings, but outside of the meetings, when you do the research, when you look at the documents in front of you and determine what's in the best interest of the port. So I appreciate that. Jesse, you are serving now from someone who left the port, or this is your second term?
Zenon Bellinger resigned from the board. And Zenon Bellinger resigned from the board as director in 2022, and then I came in for confirmation.
How long ago was that?
About a little over a year and a half.
So you've been there about a year and a half now, right? So you've had enough time to try and make a difference then, right?
Yes.
Have you ever had a conflict of interest where you had to recuse yourself?
Yes, there has been a couple.
Couple times?
Yes. And I recused myself.
And then you have recused. So it's good to know with good reason. Okay. The other one is, have you been attending all the board meetings?
Yes.
You haven't missed a board meeting?
Only when I'm off island. If I'm on island, I attend.
Yeah, but how many times have you missed a board meeting?
Maybe about, maybe two, two times.
This wasn't going to be easy. You know that. But I tell you one thing, DPW really lost a good man. I mean, all the work that you've done there, you've even been Supervisor of the Year at DPW at one point. So I'm sure that they're kicking themselves not giving you whatever you wanted to stay there. But the port has gained someone with a lot of wealth of knowledge, especially considering what happened in this typhoon with all the flooding that was going on at the hospital. I mean, at the, well, that too. That's on my mind, but at the airport, to provide some, you know, ideas and suggestions how to rectify this issue because we're anticipating there might be another typhoon coming down the line because of what FEMA mentioned to us earlier. So that's really good. But there's something I'm hoping, Jesse, that you would also look into and try and beef up at the airport, and that is cybersecurity. You know, I brought this up before and the importance of it. I mean, this is a direction now that is taking on the world and at a faster pace and putting us all in harm's way. It's holding us hostage. So I hope that you look into that area because we're finding out other hospitals, other agencies, the hospital, GCC, UOG, DOCOMO, they've all been hacked. So the last thing we need is to have any kind of accident at the hospital by being hacked or, you know, in someone else's hands other than the airport. So I hope that you really look into that and move in that direction of ensuring the security of the airport cyberly. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, other than that, I'm going to hold you to it.
Yes.
You have my support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. I'd like to also welcome Senator Canata. Do you have any questions for Mr. Garcia?
Man, good morning. Did you just get a haircut because you're coming here today? No, you have my full support. I know you're a tried and true individual. You're still the one, no matter what disaster, you've always been at the front lines. And in any respect, even in the private sector, you've always been a reliable person. And I don't think there's anything to question about your career. Your career is older than me, as old as me. 31, I'm only 26. So I don't think I should be questioning anyone that has that kind of experience and that kind of expertise. So with that being said, Mr. Garcia, I wish you all the best. And if my office needs to help you in any way, you know where to find me and you know how to call me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Canata, and thank you to Mr. Garcia for your continued willingness to serve in this capacity and for your many years of government service. And we understand you are a true asset to this board, and so we look forward to moving your nomination quickly so that you can continue serving. Sujus Masi. With that, the time now is 9:23 a.m. And if there are any more testimonies that anyone would like to submit, they can send it to my office at officeofsenatorsheleton@guamlegislature.org or drop it here to the Guam Congress Building. Sujus Masi, everyone. We are now in recess. Buenos dias, everyone. We are back from recess, and we are continuing with this hearing by the Committee on Maritime and Air Transportation, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens. Today is Friday, September 8, 2023, and the time now is 9:27 a.m. For the record, and in accordance with open government law, notices for this hearing were sent on August 30th and again on September 1st. It was also on the Guam Legislature's website and the Guam public notice website. I'd like to thank everyone for joining me today, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo Taidegui, Sujus Masi colleagues. We will now begin the portion of the agenda for the Port Authority of Guam for its board. And today, we have two appointments for these positions. And the first is for Ms. Judith P. Guthers, former senator, to serve as a member of the Board of Directors as well as Ms. Stott Harris, to serve as a member of the Board of Directors. We will allow everyone to give testimony for both since I know that many of you are here to give testimony for both these nominees. And I'd like to just remind our colleagues of the rules of engagement. We ask that you please respect everyone and that you keep your questions limited to the agenda items, which are these two appointments today. The mission of the Port Authority of Guam is to provide full services to ocean vessels in support of loading and unloading cargo for Guam and Micronesia. The Port Authority of Guam is the main lifeline of consumer goods on the island and as such recognizes its responsibility to deliver these goods in a timely and efficient manner. In support of this mission, the Port Authority also provides land and infrastructure to private interests to further develop the maritime industry in Guam. As a public corporation, the Port Authority dedicates all of its profits to the upgrading of equipment and facilities and the continued growth of the island's seaport. The Board of Directors is responsible for the planning, promotion, development, construction, operation, and maintenance of port facilities. The Port Authority plays a vital role in the lives of all citizens living on Guam and the territory. Because of our location, we are almost living on Guam and the territory. Because of our location, we are almost entirely dependent on our sea link to the United States and to foreign contacts. And the recent passage of Public Law 29125 has given the Port Authority conditional approval of its updated master plan, which will serve as the roadmap for the port's modernization. It is the port's vision to transform its facility into a world-class terminal for Guam and the Western Pacific region. At this time, we'll start with the testimonies for each of the nominees today. We will begin with board member and then move on to our GM from the port. So Ms. Conchita Essentaiteno, board member from the Port Authority of Guam, please begin.
Thank you. Buenas en hafa de, Madam Chair and members of the Guam Legislature present here today. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony today on the confirmation hearings for Mrs. Dorothy P. Harris and Dr. Judy Guthertz. My name is Conchita Titano, member of the board for the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port, and I am also a retiree from the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. I am providing testimony in support of the nominations of Mrs. Harris and Dr. Guthertz to serve on the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port's Board of Directors. As the most recent addition to the board, I've had the distinct honor of collaborating with both Dot and Judy during our port Board of Directors meetings over the past year. Each of them, each of them possesses a profound understanding of their roles, coupled with a clear vision of how they can leverage their unique skills to enhance public service. Dot, our former chief planner for the port, brings invaluable insights into capital improvement projects, ensuring a robust future for the port. Meanwhile, Judy's diverse background spanning from legislative service to education equips her to provide unparalleled expertise in public administration and governance. Both women deeply comprehend the port's pivotal role, not just in our local community, but also in the broader Pacific region. Their combined reservoir of governmental, institutional knowledge, and a sharp acumen for effective board policies ensure the welfare of the port's employees, stakeholders, and clientele. I firmly believe that their wisdom, proficiency, and experience will fortify their invaluable contributions to the port's strong family. I sincerely and wholeheartedly seek your esteemed support for Mrs. Harris and Dr. Guthertz, two remarkable Guamanian women. Their vast expertise and holistic perspectives have consistently enriched our discussions. I believe their continued service on the Board of Directors for the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port will be instrumental in guiding its future. Their dedication, passion, and wisdom are invaluable assets that we should retain. Thank you. Conchita Titano, board member with the Port Authority of Guam.
Thank you, Ms. Titano. Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Buenas en hafa de to you and to members of your committee. I am Rory Rispicio, general manager of the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port. I'm here to testify in favor of Governor Lou Leon Guerrero's nominees to the board, namely former port chief planner Dot Harris and former Senator Dr. Judith P. Guthertz. Both are reappointments to the port's Board of Directors. By this time, you are all aware of the qualifications of all of the governor's nominees, Ms. Harris and former Senator Guthertz, as well as the other two that are pending before this committee, former board chairman Frank Santos and Dr. Louis Baza, longtime veteran of the Civil Service Commission and recent former port deputy general manager for Administration and Finance. What do all of these nominees have in common? You might have guessed that they are all former who once served in notable positions in their previous professional capacities. Let's also add another former GovGuam professional, Ms. Conchita Titano, a retired administrator from the Environmental Protection Agency. You might have also guessed that they have all contributed significantly to where the port is today and are willing to serve on the board. We hope that you have come to the same conclusion that Governor Lou Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio succeeded in putting together a dynamic board to provide leadership, guidance, and more importantly, the support that has been the reason for the port to remain 100% operational during COVID, with all divisions remaining open for face-to-face operations. These same board members, together with Dr. Baza, Mr. Dominic Munya, deputy general manager for Operations, now Mr. Pacifico Martier, deputy general manager for Administration and Finance, including all of our division managers and myself, are all operating within the board's structure, working collaboratively with the port users group, as well as the port's local and federal partners, is the fundamental reason for how the port was able to open up in just three days following the devastation brought to our island by Typhoon Mauar. For the record, the port's Board of Directors are not rubber stampers. They are all methodical in their decision-making. They all give hands-on guidance. And even though an adversarial relationship does not exist between the board and management, we are not about the let's all get along to go along mindset. For instance, Madam Chair and Senators, the deputy general managers and I are subjected to annual performance reviews that the board openly deliberates and votes on while in a board meeting. This practice has been to review our performance appraisals openly, not during executive sessions or closed meetings. The port is growing by leaps and bounds in all areas, ranging from receiving annual clean audits, low-risk audit status, purchasing various yard equipment, addressing the replacement of the three ship-to-shore gantry cranes, rehabilitating its wharfs, repairing and replacing its field piers, and pushing forward other significant capital improvement projects. Furthermore, we completed the port modernization program, which Senator Joanne Brown, former port general manager, presided over during her time at the port. We also have a port master plan 2023, which is currently before the Bureau of Statistics and Plans and is working its way to the legislature for your review in accordance with the centralized planning provisions. Additionally, we have port readiness and port sustainability plans currently in development. The master plan, CIP support, port readiness, and port sustainability studies are all being funded by the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation, formerly the Office of Economic Adjustment. I end this testimony with two quotes from our August 28, 2023 press release entitled, "Port achieves fourth consecutive year designation as a lower-risk audit. PAG achieves net position growth of 12.6 million." The first quote is from the Honorable Benjamin J. F. Cruz, the public auditor, who said, quote, "These clean, low-risk status audits for the past four years demonstrate strong leadership and management from the GM and his team of dedicated, qualified, and port-strong employees. The port's level of professionalism and attention to the rule of law, transparency, and accountability is admirable." The other quote in this same press release that we would like to make a part of this record is from yourself, Madam Chair, the Honorable Amanda Shelton, Senator and our legislative oversight chair, where you praised the port on the latest audit. And you said, Madam Chair, quote, "As oversight chair, I want to congratulate port management and staff for the fourth consecutive clean audit. The results of this audit confirm that the board for the last four years continues to usher in a new level of excellence. Furthermore, I'm hoping that my colleagues will assist me in moving forward with the governor's nominees and keep the continuity of this leadership." Madam Chair, thank you for your statement and continued support. We thank you and your colleagues who will help to advance all four of the governor's nominees to the session floor with unanimous consent so that we have continued structure and governance and will not have to rely on a provision that the current Board of Directors adopted into the port's FY 2024 Budget Act, namely the survivability clause. Seduus massi, and thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. Mr. Bradley, testimony?
I recognize that name. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. It's been a while since I've been in the public eye, so I'll kind of just basically introduce myself. My name's Joe Bradley. I am a resident of Santa Rita. I've lived in Guam since June 22nd, 1984, which has been a couple of weeks. I served the government of Guam as chief economist for the now-defunct Guam Department of Commerce, and I also served in the same and similar capacities for Bank of Guam since 1992. What else? I've known Ms. Harris since July 1984, when I started to work at the Department of Commerce. She was in the planning department there, and I've had the opportunity to work with her on several projects over the course of the eight years that I was with Commerce. I've always known her to be highly competent and professional in all of those years. When the Department of Commerce was dispersed, Dot took on a role of chief planner at the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, and soon thereafter transferred to the chief planner position at the port, where she served for a long, long time and did quite well in that appointment. That makes her intimately familiar with the port for both the broad sense and the narrow details. And I think that makes her very suitable to serve on the port's board. Since she joined the port board, there have been remarkable improvements to the agency's operations and performance. I attribute part of these changes to her experience and competence, but also to her hard work and unrelenting professionalism. Port Director Rispicio has already mentioned, Port Director Rispicio has already mentioned the clean audits over the last four years for the board, for the port, and I will, so I will skip by those. And I will just say, based on the foregoing, I have to recommend that this legislature renew Ms. Harris's confirmation to be a member of the Port Authority Board of Directors. I have full confidence in the excellence of her continued contributions to that body and dedication to the people of Guam. I guess, in summary, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Madam Chair, members of the committee, I thank you for the opportunity to provide my testimony here this morning. Should you have any questions or comments, I am prepared to address them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bradley. Dr. McNinch.
Thank you, Senator Shelton, and certainly Senators. It's always an honor and pleasure to be here at the legislature. And I'm very pleased to offer support on the nomination of Dr. Judy Guthertz for the port position. But I wanted to make a quick preface comment about the port, the seaport. Marcus Aurelius, the very famous Roman emperor, said, "When you speak to the legislature, be straightforward and tell the truth." About 15 years ago, I did a study and I ranked all the government agencies. By full order of magnitude, the port was the most important government agency on Guam, you know, far and above any other agency. It's critical to security. It's critical to continuity of life here. Of all the boards and of all the positions that we certainly ask the public to support, our port is probably absolutely the most important and critical thing that we have in our government. And making sure that it has sound operation and continuity is very, very important. That being said, I do appreciate this opportunity to speak. My name is Ron McNinch, and I'm a professor at the University of Guam. I often joke at the University of Guam, if you don't like me, blame Dr. Guthertz because she hired me. And at the time she hired me, I had a big box cell phone. I was by the side of the road when they interviewed me. I think the cell phone weighed like three pounds. And I tell young people this today because they don't just realize how good it is with the very lightweight smartphones they have today. I'm pleased to support Dr. Guthertz. She's a good colleague of mine at the University of Guam. She'll be great on the Port Authority. I've known her for 27 years. She's a very good university colleague of mine. And also, she's a dear family friend. She's the godmother to my child, and she organized my baby's baby shower. So I've known her for quite a long time. And she's one of my daughter's all-time favorite teachers at the university also. Dr. Guthertz's record speaks for itself. She's a well-known professor of public administration. Public administration consists of three basic fields. Sixty percent of it's management and administration, 30% is law, and about 10% is politics. To be a good public administration professor, you have to have both knowledge of the field and you have to practice. There's nothing worse than a professor of public administration who doesn't do anything. And it's in the field of practice that I think that Dr. Guthertz's achievements most definitely speak very, very strongly. She has a very longstanding and strong level of public service, community service. She's literally helped thousands of students on her island. You cannot go anywhere in any government agency and not encounter a student of Dr. Guthertz's that's a manager, senator, or other leader in our community. She is absolutely the Rosetta Stone of Guam government in terms of leadership. I believe that Dr. Guthertz's service, particularly her wide range of service, including service here at the legislature, and her potential service on the board will serve our community well. And it is with my strong words of endorsement for her nomination that I'd like to speak about here today. Thank you very much, Senators.
Thank you very much, Dr. McNinch. Thank you to the panel for your testimony today. I'd like to invite now, we'll begin with Dr. Guthertz and then Ms. Harris. Senator?
Of the chairwoman, it is really a great honor to be here today, especially to see this facility operating the way it was designed to be, you know, restarted. Happy to say that when I was a member of the legislature, I was vice chair of the Committee on Rules, served with Senator Rispicio, and this was one of the big projects that we had envisioned to reestablish the legislative building at the original location, to see how the building that had been abandoned for so many years could still find a place in our administrative history to be used again. And I want to commend the legislature today and all the senators for the beauty of this building and the importance of it today again in the lives of the people of Guam. Thank you for helping to resurrect this facility. Madam Chair, hafa de, and members of the committee, my name is Judith Guthertz, and I am really honored to have been nominated by Governor Lou Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenorio to continue in my position as a member of the Board of Directors for the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port, also known as the Port Authority of Guam. I am blessed to have served in this position for the past two years and proud to see firsthand teamwork displayed by management and employees to keep the island's economy moving during the pandemic and in the aftermath of Typhoon Mauar. At my last confirmation hearing, I told the honorable senators that I asked myself, how could I possibly help the port? I talked about my prior work with the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, on the establishment of a cybersecurity program for Guam Power Authority and Guam Waterworks Authority, and emphasized on the need for the accountability and transparency of those utilities. When I came on board here at the port, I was amazed at how the port management was one step ahead of what was needed in these areas. The port's owner, agent, engineer, their The port's owner, agent, engineer, their subconsultants, port information technology and strategic planning staff were updating the standard operating procedures addressing low-hanging fruit violations against the cybersecurity, preparing a cybersecurity roadmap, and submitting grants to finance cybersecurity components on all CIP building projects, such as the access control CCTV and secure cable infrastructure. In addition, the U.S. Coast Guard Cybersecurity Protection Team conducted several exercises to determine if the port's information technology network was safe. The results of such exercises found that we have responded to the cybersecurity incidents in accordance with the approved cyber AMNeX facility security plan, and in their eyes, our participation was good. As far as accountability and transparency, this result is reflected on the port's ability to achieve low-risk auditor status for the fourth consecutive year. This has demonstrated the strong leadership and great team at the port, who works very hard to meet what is expected of them by the people of Guam. During the pandemic and especially during aftermath of Typhoon Moar, our federal partners were appreciative of the port's ability to provide daily updates to all media platforms and keeping our community informed of the port's recovery. This gave comfort to the people of Guam that goods and supplies continued to be delivered to the community. With the aftermath of the typhoon and upcoming military buildup, the port will be faced with unprecedented times to ensure that we rebuild our facilities. To assure these are no bottlenecks to move the port forward, it is hopeful a full composition of the Board of Directors is appointed and confirmed to guide management through sound governance and effective policies. That being said, I too join my colleagues, Board Member Ms. Harris, and our Oversight Chair, and the Honorable Senators, in requesting that the governor's nominees, Mr. Frank Santos and Luis Baza, are confirmed as soon as possible within your timeframe. I thank you for your consideration of my confirmation as a board member for the Port Authority of Guam. This public service has been very valuable to me, especially at this point in my public life. I enjoy working with the management team, interacting with personnel and stakeholders of the port, particularly the business community. And in my interactions with the business community, I receive support for the board and for the port. The business community is pleased with the progress and continued progress that our port has made. My personal belief, Madam Chair, is that the Port Authority of Guam has had a great history. Through all the various administrators and administrations of the government of Guam, the port has made progress, and that progress continues today. Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthertz. Ms. Harris.
Buenos, buenos dias, saluda, Madam Chair and members of the committee. I am very grateful to have this opportunity to appear before the committee for the purpose of my reconfirmation as a member of the Port Authority of Guam's Board of Directors. I would also like to thank Imaga Haga, Lou Leon Guerrero, and El Segundo Magallahi, Josh Tenorio, for their nomination. I am both honored and extremely humbled by their support. I am also honored to have been a part of the Port Authority of Guam family for the past three years. During that time, I have witnessed the port's numerous achievements, to include consistent increases in productivity, revenue generation, coupled with the completion of capital improvement projects and equipment repairs and acquisitions. Most recently, for the fourth consecutive year, PAG once again obtained low-risk audit status, having achieved a positive net growth of $12 million during the audit period. To quote public auditor Benjamin J.F. Cruz, "These clear, low-risk audits for the past few years demonstrate strong leadership and management from the GM and his team of dedicated, qualified, and port-strong employees. The port's level of professionalism and attention to the rule of law, transparency, and accountability is admirable." And Madam Chair, I'd also like to thank you so much for your, for your, for your words of support and your continued confidence in the Port Authority. The port's accomplishments are indeed admirable, given the challenges we have all undergone in the past three years. During the COVID-19 pandemic, when we experienced a global shutdown, the port remained 100% operational. So strong was the dedication of the port's employees to continue operating that we suffered the loss of one of our own, Mr. Henry Santos, as a result of the pandemic. Rest in peace, Henry. In late May, Typhoon Moar left a massive path of destruction across the island, and the port was not spared. Early engineering estimates revealed $8 million in damages to the island's only commercial port. Despite these severe damages to shoreside equipment and waterfront piers, the port was fully operational just three days afterward, having obtained clearance from the U.S. Coast Guard captain of the port. And for those of you, and for those of you who don't know, the port is a regulated facility under the, under the U.S. Coast Guard. This achieved, this was made possible because of the amazing port-strong spirit of the employees, as well as the leadership of port management, my colleagues on the Board of Directors, the governor, lieutenant governor, of course, Madam Chair, your, your support. The port management presented the 2023 master plan to the Board of Directors in its regular meeting in April of this year. The purpose of the plan is to assist the port in defining its near- and long-term approach to improving the port by maintaining fiscally sustainable operations and improving and promoting increased awareness and consensus on its approach among all affected stakeholders and the ratepayers of Guam. The plan will guide the port over the next five to 10 years, transforming the port into a world-class facility able to meet the going demands of Guam and the entire military Indo-Pacific region. I understand that the plan has held a public hearing and will be presented to the governor for ultimate submission to the legislature for final approval. And Madam Chair, I also, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans is statutorily mandated to conduct public hearings for all master plans within the government of Guam, and I would also like to thank Director Tyrone Titanal and his staff for his support in bringing the master plan to the public. Before I close my testimony, I would like to say a few words about Mr. Francisco Santos and Luis Baza, who had their confirmation hearings as potential members of the Board of Directors before this committee in May 2023. I was fortunate not only to serve as a member of the Board of Directors when Mr. Santos was chairperson, but also worked with him as a coworker when he was our harbor master, and I was the chief planner at the port at that time. He brought a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge of the port and a keen understanding of the port policy, of the right port policies necessary to taking care of the port employees without compromising workplace safety and containing operational expenses. Mr. Baza, prior to his nomination, was a port's deputy general manager for finance and administration. And if I may point out, during his time at the port, he was also part of the team that resulted in our, in, in our low-risk auditing status during that audit period. Being his superior, I saw firsthand the guidance he provided to the divisions he was responsible for and the accomplishments he achieved during the two years of his employment with the port. He understood that employees are valuable assets and made sure that they have a sense of belonging with the agency so they can strive to be excellent public servants, not only to the people of Guam, but the Micronesia region as a whole. I humbly ask the committee to consider, in reporting out of the committee, these two gentlemen's nominations to ensure that the port, to assure that the island's only commercial port continues to receive the governance as mandated in the Ports Enabling Act. I am so proud of my port family. I have every respect and admiration for all the employees and their management team under the leadership of General Manager Rory Ruspicio, together with my board colleagues, Dr. Judy Guthertz and Mrs. Conchita Titanal. I hope to have the opportunity to continue to work with this outstanding team in serving our community with the critical services we provide. Again, unsinangaluno sijuzus maasi, zen, and benedice sijuzus todo samzu.
Sijuzus maasi, Mrs. Harris. Now, I'd like to offer the senators, if you have any questions for the panel members, before we begin, questions for the nominees, so we can excuse the panel members. Thank you very much. You may be seated. The audience, and we'll begin, you can ask questions to both the members, since the testimony was given to both of them, and we'll go in the same order again. Senator Fisher, you may begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Ms. Guthertz, and good morning, Ms. Harris. Ms. Guthertz, could you, when did you first, I noticed both of you have, are renominated. When did you first become a member of the board at the port? Microphone.
Approximately two years ago, to fill the term of a board member that had to leave the island.
Okay, so you've been there, did you say three or two?
Two.
Two years.
A little less than two, I think, yeah.
Okay, so relatively new.
Mm-hmm.
And Ms. Harris, when did you first come to the port?
Pardon me, sir, could please repeat your question?
Yes, ma'am. When did you first begin your service at the port?
I, three years ago, and Dr. Guthertz was fulfilling a term, so her, so her term has been, was truncated because she was fulfilling a prior member's term. I had been there for the full three years, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I listened to Dr. McNinch's testimony in which she said that the port is, well, it's a premier agency, the government of Guam, it's our lifeblood, it's, you know, to move the metaphor a little bit, it's, you know, the heart of Guam's economy. Would you agree with that, Ms. Guthertz?
I have to say it's at least one of the most important. Because it's one of the most important, it's a priority agency in terms of delivering food to, to our island and critical supplies to our island for, particularly for health purposes, and also for construction purposes and so forth. So it is a very important agency, and it, it should be open 24/7 if necessary.
Okay, and Ms. Harris, would you agree with that?
Yes, sir. The port is critical. Everything that we see, everything that we're wearing, most of it came in through our port.
Okay.
Not only to the people of Guam, but also to the region in Micronesia. When Guam's port goes down, I guarantee you, there are people in Panapi and people in Palau, they're counting the cans of Spam on their shelves if our port shuts down. We are that critical, not only to Guam, but to our neighboring islands and brothers and sisters.
Okay, so it's extraordinarily important, any way you look at it.
It's a matter of life and death, sir, if we don't have our port operating.
Okay. With that in mind, how very important the port is, what is your conception, I'll begin with you, Ms. Guthertz, what is your conception of a board member's role and duty in relation to the port?
It's, it's policy, assisting with policy and ensuring compliance with laws and regulations and that the port customers are served properly. I think we have demonstrated that in our work over the last few years, and prior boards have done that as well.
Okay, do you think you have any responsibility or duty in relation to the finances of the port?
Oh, absolutely, that's part of it, part of the policy oversight when it comes to the expenditure of funds.
Okay.
And accounting for funds, and I was extremely pleased with the last audit done by the public auditor's office. I think we've accounted for every penny, last, up to the last penny that the board has had within its control, and the agency has spent in accordance with the budget plans as authorized by the board.
Okay, and Ms. Harris, would you agree with Ms. Guthertz? Do you believe part of your responsibility is the finances of the port?
Absolutely, sir. We are stewards of, of, to ensure the prudent use and the best use of, of the monies that are, that the port receives to improve and serve the people of Guam.
All right, and then, Ms. Guthertz, since, and I agree with both of you, I think that your duties towards the taxpayers, the ratepayers, approaches out of a fiduciary. How do you execute that part of your office? And what I mean by that is, how do you exercise your responsibility to, for financial oversight?
Well, obviously, it starts with the budget, approving the port's budget for fiscal year, and then ensuring compliance with the budget as approved, and also working to ensure that the evaluatory offices, such as a public auditor, has all the cooperation from the port.
Ma'am, would you like some water, perhaps?
That would be great.
Yeah.
But making sure the public auditor has all the documents needed to do a proper audit.
Okay. I think, I think they're bringing you a glass of water.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm getting over a little cold.
Oh, no, no. Ms. Harris, how do you exercise that, your duty to financially oversee what's going on at the port?
Well, as, as per our enabling legislation, the budget is one of our fundamental responsibilities on the port board. We do, if I have questions, I do communicate with the general manager, and if need be, he will bring in his division heads to further explain certain concerns that I have. I want to know that in reviewing the current budget for, in reviewing the current, the budget proposal for the current fiscal year, which was then adopted by the, by the board, there were some decreases in proposed expenditures by the certain divisions, which I, which I'm very happy to see that they're, that they're, you know, being again prudent in, in the handling of these, of these monies. I believe, when I look at the budget, I want to ensure that these expenditures go toward meeting the best interest of the community of Guam, the people of Guam, and that's a, and that is the ultimate goal in reviewing what we spend our money on and how we, and how we utilize our resources.
Let's see. Okay, thank you for that answer. We just went through about a five-week budget, budget hearings done here at the legislature, so I know that we're all very, very focused, very focused on how our money is collected and how it is spent. And time and time again, I think, I think my colleagues would agree with me that we thought that we weren't being quite as careful with the purse as we should be, and I'm encouraged to hear both of your responses in regard to that. Some time ago, at the port, there were a number of individuals there, I guess, colloquially known as the Port Seven, and in the settlement of that process, and I don't think either of you were on the board at the time, and for those who don't know the Port Seven, it was a number of individuals, seven, who it appears engaged in a criminal conspiracy to to defraud the people of Guam of significant amounts of money. And the port rightly disciplined them, fired them, and for reasons which remain mysterious, the Attorney General's Office declined to do anything about it. An individual in there by the name of Ms. Bernadette Menno, she received 646,000 and Lenora Leon Guerrero received 189,000 and Francine Rosio received 426,000, that's almost half a million, and Vivian Leon, she received 296,000 and Josetta Havelosa, who received 409,000. That's not all of them, that was only five and that came to a little over $2 million. And I know that you weren't on the board at the time, but what strikes me is, at one of the very first board hearings you attended, Ms. Guthers, you endorsed those settlements and I have the board, would you like me to play it?
Not necessary for me.
Let's get that right.
And not deviate from what the law requires as well. I'm not familiar with this case, this is the first time I've heard of this case, but seeing how it went through all these different levels of scrutiny over a nine-year period through our court system, all the way through the Supreme Court of Guam, it seems to me that this matter nine years ago was not handled the way it should have been and as a result we have to make it right now. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman and General Manager.
Ms. Guthers, when you said, "We need to make it right now," what did you mean by that? Could you explain that?
Yes, I'd be happy to explain it. You know, as I said, this, or as you said, this happened before I was a member, this, this situation. And I'm not here to second guess any previous administration, but the courts acted on this. The orders came, the Civil Service Commission came.
Could you bring the microphone a little closer?
The courts, the Civil Service Commission rendered orders, the port responded, the settlements were negotiated, it was presented to the board. In my opinion, it was time to move forward and that was the rationale for my action.
So the rationale was just the necessity of moving forward?
Well, moving forward, especially with the basis of the court action and the Civil Service Commission to settle these cases.
Well, what do you think, would it have been a better solution to achieve justice rather than just efficacy?
It would have prolonged this, it would keep going and there would be no guarantee that the, the higher court would overturn anything. You know, I've been involved in a lot of civil service reviews in the past for other kinds of cases and the end result is not something often happy about, even when I was with the police department, I had lost a lot of cases at the Civil Service Commission in disciplining employees, was ordered to reinstate them with back pay. It's a bitter pill to swallow sometimes, but having observed the dynamics of this as an outsider before being a member of the board, seeing how the controversy was prolonged, seeing the need for the port to move forward, that was my feeling and I was not in a position to second guess the attorneys for negotiating the settlements.
Well, I think, I'll just quibble with that. As a board member, don't you think it was your responsibility to investigate? I mean, if you were going to, if you were going to endorse?
The matters were investigated and I studied the documentation.
So you did, you did see this?
I did, yes, I did.
Okay, and did you come to any, which, could you describe those documents?
Well, you know, all I can tell you is I had my doubts about some of the accusations.
Okay, you had doubts about the accusations, some of them?
Yes, I did.
Okay, could you explain?
I think that's enough explanation. I wasn't sure that the inferences were accurate that were made against some of these employees.
Well, with respect, ma'am, I don't think that a non-answer is an answer, so I can't accept that and you must understand that the selection or the confirmation that you are asking us to do depends very much on our estimation of your judgment and.
Well, you know, Honorable Senator, you know, the courts acted, the Civil Service Commission acted, the port acted.
And so, and you endorsed it, so so did you, and my question is, I'm just exploring your capacity for reaching a good fiduciary-like judgment and when I see that we gave $2 million to individuals without adequate, and you know, that's not the end of the story, there was one person, this is, you, I assume you will find this as disturbing as anyone would. One of the, one of the individuals, Ms. Vivian Leon, she received $296,000 and her attorney, Mr. Ike Agigee, his attorney's fees were $306,645. In other words, the attorney made more than Ms. Leon and, and you know, he wanted to evidence the fact that he had done the work, so he turned in a billing sheet and this is it, one page, there's absolutely no designation of what he did, but we just wrote him a check for $306,000. Knowing that, does this raise any questions in your mind?
I think the whole, the whole matter is regrettable from the very beginning and I'm sorry, I'm very sorry that it became such a unfortunate episode for everyone involved, but I did what I thought was right at the time and I still feel I did the right thing. Now, you may differ with me, we have provided documents to this honorable body, answering every question that has been asked of us.
Okay.
And I'm going to stick with that, Honorable Senator.
Fair enough, but you must know that the question before us is whether or not in reaching the conclusion you did, you exercised the sort of, the sort of.
I respect your authority.
Okay, we want to make sure that you can and will exercise the authority, the sort of judgment over the port that is necessary and so obviously it, you know, we wonder when a person comes in and endorses a number of settlements, seven of them, without, as far as we can tell, without doing any investigation on it, that's the way it looks on the paper. And I know that, I understand what you just said.
I don't agree with that at all.
Yes, ma'am. One aspect of it which was, I think, the most disturbing was while this was going on, we had an Attorney General of Guam, his name was Levin Camacho, I'm sure we all remember. And Mr. Camacho actually was one of the attorneys who received $28,000 from the port. While he was the Attorney General and while he refused to criminally investigate the matter, does that give you any, set off any alarm bells and give you any pause? What's, I want to hear what, I want to hear your conception of, you know, it's a judgment question, what do you think?
I think, I think the whole thing is very bizarre from the very beginning and it fell on our laps to clean it up.
Okay.
And my goal was to move forward as a member of the board, for the board to move forward, for the port to move forward, and I made my decision.
Okay.
If the senators aren't comfortable with that, that's fine.
Fair enough.
But I feel I made the right decision at the time.
Okay, and you know, nobody can quibble with that, that is what you thought to be the right decision. And I totally agree with you, the thing was bizarre, I mean, it was, it was clearly a criminal conspiracy in our AG's office for whatever reason and so turn and so forth. But Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity and thank you, Ms. Harris, as well as Ms. Guthers.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly welcome to the two nominees. I certainly appreciate the testimony of your backgrounds, I think we can all appreciate you have extensive history, certainly you, Dr. Guthers, and Ms. Harris, who I've had the opportunity to work with. What concerns me and certainly having served as General Manager for the Port Authority for six years prior to your current manager, certainly gives me some insight into the operations of where we were and looking at where we are now, and I think that's what matters in terms of making a decision on your confirmation. And you're right, we did have a confirmation hearing, I don't know, a couple, several months ago on your two other board members and unfortunately, you know, information came to light that was very disturbing further, including Mr. Louis Baz admitting that he did the settlements without counsel on behalf of the port advising him, that he, and this is on record, it's recorded, it's public, anyone can look it up, you know, admitted essentially that he settled these agreements without counsel and relied on the counsel of the employees. Those are the type of things that raise issue, especially also, and I bring it up since you brought up Mr. Baz, who claimed here publicly at this forum that he recused himself from these cases. Mr. Baz, who served as the chairman of the Civil Service Commission, who heard a number of these cases, who interestingly enough ended up being hired and he settled these cases. So I don't know, I mean, it kind of makes you wonder if there are ethical issues there. But I know that Mr. Baz sat in on those hearings because I was at those hearings and our legal counsel at the time, Mr. Phillips relayed time and time again that they were using the wrong standard of clear and convincing evidence on those cases. So Dr. Guthers, I mean, I know with your academic background, the facts are important, we're all entitled to our opinion, the reality are what are the facts and that's not something we can just say, oh, it's our opinion. In that particular case, he denied ever sitting in on those hearings. That to me is, it raises concern, I mean, certainly, Ms. Harris, you sat in through that hearing. Those are the type of things that raise question with regards to people's judgment, with regards to their character, especially when ratepayer money is at stake and the port during this tenure has had no reservations whatsoever in paying out public money. So your, your facts to the case unfortunately are not all accurate and I wish you had looked into the details and looked at the actual evidence and not rely on the information that's been provided to you because some of that's clouded unfortunately, and that's my, I get to say that, that's my view on that issue. And I was a little disappointed to hear at your very first, goodness, your very first board meeting, that that was something you felt a need to do. If you felt it was in the past, why would you, in your new capacity to the board wanting to move forward, essentially endorse the action, a previous action that was taken by your manager and other board members that really publicly till this day, no matter how much you want to sugarcoat it, really continues to raise question, especially when so much public money was paid out and then on top of that, they were brought back at the highest level of increments possible, including years that the, that the port, other employees in the port did not receive increments on those years. You have to wonder, we wonder. So I just wanted, wanted to relay that, but then I also wanted to ask certain questions with regards to port operations. What do you think is the most critical operation at the Port Authority? I'll ask you first, Dr. Guthers.
Well, for me, it's making sure the cargo is unloaded and delivered.
Do you feel very much that your management has prioritized the movement of cargo with your employees out in the yard?
I think so, yes. We, we've been getting good reviews.
Do you know how many employees have been hired out in the yard, even in the time you've been there?
No, not, not a specific number, I don't have a number.
Do you know how many employees have been hired in administration?
I don't have a number.
You recently, in your board meeting last week, added an additional position, did you not vote on that for a procurement manager?
Yes, I did.
Did you ask why you needed an assistant procurement manager?
Yes, we discussed it during the meeting, yes.
And why did you need an additional assistant procurement manager?
To facilitate the movement of, of the work.
Did you ask where your procurement manager was?
You know, Senator, I, I'm not sure what you're trying to get at, but.
Dr. Guthers, I have to tell you, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm very, I'm very direct, there's no sidestepping, I'm not trying to go around anything, but I'm asking, there's a reason I'm asking these specific questions, why you would add on positions and your decision and your judgment of making why you would add additional administrations to the port.
Because the position is needed, I believed it was needed.
Why was it needed?
To facilitate the work of the unit, to make sure the work got done.
Your work in your procurement unit hasn't been done?
Well, I think we are in the position now of trying to procure additional equipment for the port and more talent was needed to help with that.
Did you ask why your procurement wasn't moving?
I think we discussed it, yes, yeah.
Well, enlighten the rest of us.
I'm sorry?
Enlighten the rest of us. You discussed it, what did you discuss?
We discussed the importance of, of having sufficient leadership in the unit to be able to facilitate the work of the unit.
The reason I bring this up is because I want to give you some background if you're not aware. In 2018, there were 351 employees at the Port Authority and that number's gone up and down. 2019, there were 356, it went up to 373 in 2020, it went up to a high in 2021 of 385 employees and it dipped in 2022 to 362. Let me give you a breakdown of where those employees are and where these additional hires went to, and this again is from 2018 to 2022, these are audited. Your administration and finance, during this tenure of this administration, you've added 26 employees to admin and finance, 26. You should add how, how many millions of dollars that that added to the cost of the Port Authority. Do you know how much you added to equipment and maintenance during this time? Negative four, equipment and maintenance, negative four. Transportation service, which I think we'd all consider fairly critical to the operations of the port, the movement of the cargo on and off the vessel, in and out of the yard, negative 11. Steve Adoring Services, negative one. Facility maintenance, you actually added one personnel to facility maintenance in terms of the overall numbers. Terminal Services negligible, nothing added, nothing taken. So the numbers don't reflect the reality of where the port is and having left the port when I did, when we were reviewed for the bond that we received, a $72 million bond in terms of their rightsizing of our operations, they determined that we were right-sized for our operations, so a little concerned that the priority, while we say one thing, the actual outcome of hiring has been in administration, not in the yard. What is your response to that?
Well, my response is, look at the audit, the audit found us to be in proper compliance in all areas.
Yes, I have your most recent audit.
And so I, I'm comfortable with the audit.
I have your most recent audit.
I think the resources that we have, you know, are being challenged in terms of being able to meet an increasing demand for port services. Those hires, I believe, were in keeping with an increasing demand for port services.
Well, maybe you need to research where your existing personnel, your, your procurement manager is that's been exiled for almost three years.
You know, you know.
And for purposes of disclosure, Dr. Guthers and everyone else here, your current procurement manager was my former chief of staff, so.
You're what?
Obviously someone I know very well, my former chief of staff.
I'm not aware of that.
Well, I'm relaying it publicly as a matter of disclosure since, you know, we all want to be transparent. Maybe you need to look, I understand she's.
What are you implying, what are you implying, Senator?
I understand she's the current acting Chief Procurement Officer for the government of Guam. You have no issue of concern with that?
Well, I think maybe, maybe that's an opportunity for that person, I don't know what that situation is other than.
Yes, Dr. Guthers, and I'm bringing it up because probably as the board, you maybe need to dig a little deeper and look a little further about what's going on in your board operations because it does raise significant question. With regards to your audit, the most recent audit for 2022, and while we understand the Port Authority has received grants and grant, we appreciate all the grants that the port receives, but of course grants are intended for very specific purposes, so they don't necessarily, nor do you have the ability to spread that money around for other operations. Your revenues in 2019 were 55.2 million and expenses were only 48.4, so that's pretty good. I mean, you would say, hey, that gives us some breathing room. In 2020, your revenues reported in the audit were 54.6 million dollars, your expenses went up to 55.7. In 2021, your revenues were 55.06 and your expenses were 58.3. Your loss from operations for 2020 is 1.064 million, FY 2021, 3.2 million, 2022, 2.9 million. These are your operational losses. Of course, you can say, well, but look at our overall. These are your operational losses. Of course, you can say, well, but look at our overall, what we generated because you're adding on the revenues you have from your grants. But for the past three years, the port has had three years of lost revenue in your operations. So if we want to look at how well we're doing, that's another reality. Another question I wanted to ask with regards to the Port Authority of Guam were public statements that were made on your board meeting, of which I assume, you know, it's during your tenure, had to do with the storage of cargo from the Guam Power Authority. Do you recall that issue?
Yes.
The port had, GPA's contractor had brought in what we know, obviously, the people of Guam, I'm sure are very familiar because they've had to deal with the hauling back and forth of all the equipment to the new power plant. And certainly after all these load shedding, we're looking forward to the construction of the new power plant. What did you do with regards to charges for the time that the cargo was on the port property? Do you know?
I think the port tried to accommodate GPA so as to avoid having to make significant charges to the utility.
Do you have the ability to do that? Do you have the legal ability to do that?
I think we do.
How?
This base.
How do you have the discretion to decide who pays, who pays charges and who doesn't?
You know, Senator, this was in order to ensure, this, the overall purpose was to ensure that GPA did not have to convert the charges that the port generally would have charged into a higher power race for our people.
Do you have the discretion to do that legally?
I think as a board member that we have prob, uh, we have purview over the finances for the port in the public interest.
Let me ask you a question. Who sets the rates for the Port Authority of Guam?
You have, well, you have the Public Utility Agency helps us. But I think in this case, we helped the people of Guam avoid a rate increase for power, uh, power expenses of GPA. Had we not done this, this, these charges would have been passed to the rate payer.
And you decided you had the authority to do that?
At the time, yes.
How much, how much actual revenue did the port lose as a result of this decision?
Oh, I'm sure it was a significant amount, a dollar amount. I'm not sure the specific amount.
Several million dollars, Dot? Do you have a better figure?
That's a lot of money.
Let me relate with this.
Remember, this happened at a time when our island was just sort of coming out of the COVID issue.
I, I don't argue that. I don't argue.
That was the reason. We're trying to protect our people from not having to pay an increase in their GPA rates because the costs would have been passed down by GPA to the rate payers. They're obligated to do that.
Did GPA credit the Port Authority on your 100-plus, $1,000 month power bill?
I don't think that was related to it.
Do you think GPA could do that, having sit, having, you know, the years you've sat on the Consolidated Commission? Would GPA have the ability to simply do that to offset the kindness of the port?
You know, Senator, I'm, I'm not here to argue with you. I'm here to answer your questions the best I can. But you're not even letting me answer the questions.
No, I, I allow you. Please, answer the question. I want to hear your answer.
Well, my answer is, this is a completely different situation. You're asking about a completely, completely different situation. We helped this island by doing what we did. We helped our people by doing what we did. And I believe we have the authority to do that.
And where is your legal authority to do that?
In the establishment of the port.
And the establishment of a port somehow granted you the ability to decide what rates you charge and what rates you don't charge?
Yeah, it wasn't a rate issue. This was an issue of extending assistance to a, a different agency of the government to facilitate the movement of, of equipment to its new, uh, uh, power plant construction site without passing the costs on to the rate payers.
Well, let me read to you what's in the regulation of rates in the law.
Go ahead.
"All rate charges, assessments, and costs made or charged by any public utility shall be just and reasonable and in conformance with public law and shall be filed with the commission. And no rate, charge, or assessment costs shall be established, abandoned, modified, departed from, or changed without a public hearing and the prior approval of the commission. The commission, upon notice to the public utility, may suspend the operation of any proposed rate, charge, or assessment costs, or any proposed abandonment or modification thereof, or departure therefrom, and after a public hearing by other regulates." I won't continue on, but I'm just relaying to you that you don't have that authority. The Public Utilities Commission has that authority.
And we did not consider it a rate issue.
Well, you may not have considered a rate issue, but when you have cargo that is in your yard, aside from the five-day grace period that they're granted, unless it's an act of God that, or equipment breakdown from the Port Authority, you have no ability to extend any free charge to any other customer.
I will tell you at this point that at no time has there been any communication from the Public Utility Agency regarding this matter.
Did you notify the Public Utility Commission?
Personally, not me, no.
Did the board ever file or direct the general manager to file any request of the Public Utilities Commission?
I didn't do it, no. I don't know if others did, but I did not ask.
And are you, Ms. Harris, are you aware of any decision ever made by the board to file a request of the Public Utilities Commission?
Well, that depends on whether this is indeed a tariff issue or a rate issue. Extending, extending the length of time for the equipment to be on the port property, does that actually constitute a, a tariff issue? So that's another question that we have to look into. I, I didn't believe it did.
Well, the process is pretty standard. I mean, there is, there is a grace period. And anything beyond the grace period, there is a charge to it. It's pretty basic.
Ma'am, I don't believe this is the first time that the port has, has, has extended this type of assistance for the grounding of oper, of, 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 of equipment on our property.
Well, not during my tenure, I'm sorry. I don't, I never gave grace periods beyond that. And then again, what legal authority do you have to do so?
We could get back to you on that.
Well, I would hope so because, I mean, if we are talking several million dollars of port revenue at a time when your operations actually for the last several years have lost money, this is several million dollars that the port needed. If GPA wanted to offset your power bill, which he, they could not do legally either, nor could the CCU decide that they're going to defer because it's improper procurement. So I'm bringing it up because this is during your tenure that you guys have allowed this to happen. And I don't know what legal authority you have or your general manager has, or anyone at the Port Authority of Guam has to waive these type of fees. And certainly, it may be in the good interest of the people of Guam, but this was a charge that should have been made to the contractor. And I don't think we have the ability selectively decide that this is a government of Guam agency, we're not going to charge them, but everyone else out there that has cargo in the yard gets charged. Is there something inconsistent with that?
Are you still, are you directing?
Either one of you, since you're both there, you certainly can answer.
I think we could agree to disagree on how we handled this and we can, if you, we can come back to you with a, with a greater, yeah, with, with a greater explanation.
Well, we certainly would look forward to that. I certainly would want to see your fish.
Looking to, to discuss the specific legalities of the tariff and of, and of the, and of the dis, not, the tariff situation and how we are, and how the extension of time for the grounding of the equipment is allowable. We will get back to you if that's okay with you now.
Well, I certainly would look forward to that because I would, definitely would like to see that before we even address confirmation. Because that, to me, is pretty critical. I'm sure a lot of your users at the port would be interested to know, especially if they've been charged for keeping their cargo beyond the timeline that the Guam Power Authority got a, or not least, I shouldn't say the Guam Power, I should say the contractor for the Guam Power Authority got a significant free pass in the amount of several million dollars.
We would like to ins, uh, ensure everybody that the decision was.
Well, I think we want to see that because if we have preferential treatment for who we do and do not charge, I think that would be a concern.
I appreciate your concern and I look forward to us, and I hope, and we, uh, we look forward to providing you with the information that you require, ma'am.
Well, good luck. I mean, there are reasons your other board members have yet to be confirmed. I mean, if you're not aware, there's reason, there's advice and consent. And while we may have a lot of good people, some good people do some very bad things. And certainly in our role.
Excuse me, Senator, I take exception to that.
I'm not, well, I get to make a general statement whether you take exception or not, Dr. Guthers.
I take exception to that.
And certainly, having been at their public hearing, I think a lot of that came to light. So we get to decide, we get to, and you know, having sat in this role, we get to determine whether or not we believe that individuals that have been appointed by the governor are, are fit to serve in those capacities. And while both of you have extensive backgrounds, what does matter to me certainly, and I'm sure a number of my colleagues at this juncture, is whether or not you are making the best decisions on behalf of our community with regards to the management and operations of the port, which we all agree. No one's going to argue that this port is not critical to Guam. It's very true. It's very evident. But how the port is managed or mismanaged is obviously a concern, especially when it comes to rate payer money. That we've seen lately, the port has no reservation paying out. Without question, no reservation in paying out, whether or not, even though we see general statements being made that are not factual. So with that, I have no further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Titigl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good afternoon, Dr. Guthers and Dorothy. I remember it was just not too long ago, actually, when we had your confirmation, Dr. Guthers. And it was at that time that I, you know, I supported your nomination at that time. And unfortunately, Dot, I was not at your confirmation, or, or was I was, right? Okay, supported yours. It was 2015, though, right? Was it? Two thousand? So this is your first term? You're going into your second term?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you were nominated in what year? 2000 what?
Three years ago, three years ago, ma'am.
Okay, three years ago. Okay, I totally forgot about that. But you know, I have to, have to say that, you know, I'm not always right with my decisions, you know, when I make decisions, unfortunately, and, but I always keep tabs on people who, you know, they're, I have an interest in, you know, to make sure they're going to do the right thing, especially when, when, uh, Dr. Guthers, I mentioned, you know, I was hoping that you would never turn a blind eye, you know, to, that, make sure that everything would be done correctly and, and looked at thoroughly, thoroughly. And to hear you say something like, well, I just want to move on, let's get, move on and, you know, just sign off on this and move on, was very disheartening to hear you say that. Let me finish, Dr. Guthers, because this is a part where I know it's different from sitting there than being up here. And I was very disappointed to hear that. And Dot, I've known you for a while and for you to recommend, you know, Mr. Baz, especially after listening to that is, is, your comment was reckless. I was so disappointed in the two of you. So far, what I've studied so far, now, I've, I've watched the board, you know, hearings. I went online, mostly everybody was online, and I watched the board hearings. And in December 2021, when Dr. Guthers, uh, read a letter into the record on Resolution 202, it was Resolution 202201. It, and I watched how you read it. And I was thinking in my mind, you know, did, did you actually write that? I mean, you just got on the board. You know, you mentioned you, two weeks, you know, you wanted to make sure you look into this for two weeks. And then I was just listening and I was asking other people, do, do you think she wrote it? Or did someone else write that letter for her? So I'm going to ask you, and if I FOIA your email between you and the general manager, did you write that letter that you had during a board meeting on January 20, 2022? Dear colleagues, dear port management, that, that whole letter that you, did you write that? Or did someone help you write that?
Madam Chair, that was my presentation.
Did you write the letter or did you have someone help you?
Based on my evaluation of the documents I reviewed.
Okay, and if I FOIA your email, it's not.
Whatever you want.
Okay, I just want to make sure because it sounded like, you know, someone wrote it for you. It really did, the, the way you were reading it. And I was just, what, you've been there not very long? And that also made me think, you know, Dr. Guthers, given your relationship with the general manager, and I've known you and Senator Raspicio, we worked together, you know, and you've friends with him for a very long time and.
Senator, I worked with you.
Dr. Guthers, I'll let you answer after I'm done. I'll let you answer after I'm done, okay? Because the question, there, there is a question. But you know, given that your relationship with the general manager for many years, do you consider yourself, now, here's a question, do you consider yourself, you know, a proper check and balance for him, considering the endorsement of $200,000 salary for the general manager, which is higher than any other political appointee? Do you feel like you have that check and balance with the general manager?
May I answer now?
I, yes, please.
First of all, I don't know what you mean by relationship. There is no romantic relationship.
I didn't say really, I didn't say romantic otherwise, but you're very close with him.
My friendship with Mr. Raspicio is as a result, having been a senator, like I was your friend when you were senator. That is as far as the relationship goes.
Okay.
And number two, Madam Chair, I would like to remind our dear legislature, Mr. Raspicio did not have a salary increase for three years. The first time he got a salary adjustment was this past year, the first time.
Okay, since, are, are you done? Because I don't want to interrupt you. Okay, okay. So, I'm sorry if you misunderstood. I didn't mention anything about a romantic relationship. I know he's, he's married, very much married to a friend of mine. In fact, she's a Realtor.
But the way you presented it sounded kind of funny.
Let me, then I apologize if, if you take it out.
Thank you for that.
Like I said, he's married to a good friend of mine who's a Realtor.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sure you, you're familiar with her.
Yes, I know.
Fabrine, right? Have you done work with Fabrine? Have you bought any, has she ever been?
No, personally, I haven't.
Oh, okay, so she, you've never used her as a Realtor to work with anything on purchasing any?
I have not used her as a Realtor.
Okay, no purchasing. I just wanted to make sure because, yeah, so, moving on. That being said, when you just talked about, I'm going to go with you, Dot, because I heard that we're supposed to go back and forth. You were very instrumental, Dot, on ensuring you were pushing really hard, actually, according to the board minutes, on the increase of increments for the general manager. And it didn't get through because they, the board decided not to give those increments, right? However, later on, they decided to, what's called in December 29, 2022, the Board of Directors meeting provided a novel way of the Director Harris to achieve her mission and bring in the port, you know, port manager's salary up by standards. And how did, how did that come about? I mean, in a newspaper article that I read, it mentioned that the general manager called it, we basically resigned, what was the comment he said? Oh, we closed out the governor and lieutenant governor's first term of office. I've never heard first term of office. Okay, so he resigns? Okay, is that true, Dot? He resigns, right? He resigns?
Yes.
And then to bring him back, you brought him back at a higher salary? Did he also receive his, like, leave, sick leave and all that other stuff? And why did you do this route instead of just offer him a higher salary, instead of having him resign and then rehire? I, I just couldn't get my head around that. Can you explain, Dot?
Well, well, generally, well, okay, this is the case during the end of one administration and the beginning of another administration, whether or not it is the same part, the same governor or lieutenant governor. It is a courtesy to resign. And then it is up to the governor to decide whether or not they want, okay, okay, Ms. Brown, this is, I'm not, you know, this is what I've seen. And then get reinstated. When he was reinstated, he was slotted into the salary level that was correct.
What, what do you mean by correct? Can you explain what is considered correct?
As per the, uh, the pay grade. As per the, the pay grade, yes, for his, for his position, the step in the pay grade for his position.
No, if, if someone is, yeah, I don't, you know, Dot, because the way I see it, if somebody resign, yeah, I'm glad you understand and my concern.
Yeah.
But you, you, you know, during that board, I mean, you were, you're pushing him to get his increment, which I think, actually, you were right. You know, if there was any time to give any kind of raise, it was during their evaluation, and they get their increments, but the other board members said no. And I wondered why. And then, when they had him reinstated, resign and then reinstated, and then, that's where I'm, I'm really falling short, 200,000 plus to give him when, what's correct?
Yeah, I, I can understand your confusion, because when they were in, even when they were initially brought on board during the first term of the administration, they were slotted into the correct pay grade at that time, I do believe. So everything was just to correct.
At that pay grade, at 200,000?
Well, that is, that is correct, ma'am. This is, this is, this is aligned with what is appropriate for, for management at that level, according to our personnel rules and regulations and our pay scale.
Wow, that's, it's very questionable, and I think the public is, is concerned about that.
Ma'am, that, that pay scale was adopted by the legislature in its statute.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a point, because again, this is interesting, this whole idea that there's terms that begin and end. The terms of the board members don't coincide with administrations.
No, ma'am.
And, and I also want to point out for the record, because I was there during a transition time between a first and second term of the Calvo Tenoria administration, I did not resign, nor was I ever reinstated, because my tenure is not hired by the governor, my tenure was hired by the board. So I just want to put that for the record. I don't know where this idea comes. I know the governor's office did this. I don't think they did it for the rest of their directors. But I just want to clarify that, because the idea that somehow the general manager position at the port is concurrent with an administration is really not the case. If it was to follow the way it was intended, it would be irrelevant when the governor's term ended and when it began. So I don't know where that logic came from, but I certainly did not resign and get rehired at a higher salary between the first and second term of, of our, of our administration.
No, I, I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Okay.
And I appreciate your concern.
Okay, so you can understand, you know, what, to me, it's called shenanigans going on at the port. And, you know, even Joe Bradley, who, who, you know, he's a friend of mine too as well, and coming here to testify on your behalf, you know, but he even, you know, warned you about the issues at the port, and, you know, told you probably not in your best interest to go there, but, you know, Dot, I've known you too, and I thought that maybe, you know, you would be those eyes and, you know, question certain things that, that doesn't sound right, and even if it doesn't, to, to stop everything and continue, not to move forward, but to stop, take pause and gather information, resources, and really thoroughly investigate the situation before moving forward. And I don't see that when I watch your board, you know, meetings and listen to you, and I just, I, I don't see that, and I'm concerned, I'm very concerned.
Senator, you're right, we do go a, a long way back, and I, if you have any questions, if you have any concerns, please call me, we could have a discussion at any time, I would welcome that opportunity. Because I, I, we do have, you know, we do go a long way back, and I want to make sure that we have that, we continue to have that.
Well, do, I, that, you keep that door open?
Level of communication.
Right. Well, Dot, my door is open to you as well. If you have some concerns that you might be coerced or bullied or anything like that, you know, and then something bad, you can always call me, and I will definitely, you know, my door is always open, I'm, I'm really concerned. Now, Dot, there was a, an ad taken out in the PDN on August 29, 2023, asking for a, an assistant procurement. I, I know it was brought up earlier, and, and supplies manager. Why are you asking for that? Again, I'm sorry, I might have missed it, but why are you asking for this position when there's already, there was someone there during your time?
Yes.
At the very beginning, in that position, that's being outsourced to another place, but can come back, so?
Yeah, with, with regard to the, to the procurement, the, the, yeah, the individual who is now on, being detailed for training, I believe that we did answer that question with the, with the, communicate, with the memorandum to the committee chair.
There was a memorandum?
And I believe that that information was, was disseminated to the senators. And insofar as requesting for assistance, you know, the port is not, it, it's not an agency that orders Xerox Inc. and Post-it notes. We are a $55 million operation, and the, and the complexity of the, of our procurement process, especially when you're talking about multimillion dollars worth of equipment, it does require a certain level of, of staff support to be able to successfully procure, successfully develop a scope of work, successfully develop, review the qualifications of the, of the potential bidders and responses to the requests for, for proposals. I think that it's very prudent that we, that we do this, that this position is absolutely necessary, because especially considering the level, the complexity and expense, and expenses required.
Absolutely. I, I agree, I agree.
In operations.
However, but Dot, why would you take away that one person that was overseeing this position and, and let that person go to another agency when it's so desperately needed, like you mentioned, and the importance of that position? And then, why, why aren't you not bringing that person back to the port who has that knowledge, that wealth of knowledge that would make life easier for you at the port?
You know, ma'am, I was part of.
Oh, by the way, by the way, the memorandum that you were talking about, that you gave to the committee chair, I haven't seen it. What, what does it say on that?
Well, I, could, could it be made available, ma'am?
I've never seen it, yeah.
You know, when the procurement, you know, during, I was part of the interview team for that procurement officer, and, and based on her application, she was qualified. And, but it's, but now there is training involved.
Can you speak up to, sorry, Dot?
The procurement officer is still with the port, but is, is still receiving training, and I believe it's up to the chief procurement officer to make that determination. And insofar as further discussing this, ma'am, if you don't mind, this is, this is a personnel matter, and I don't really want to go into any details of that, because there, there are, you know, it's, it's a personnel issue, and I, I, it's not my.
I see. And, and who's the current, who's the current acting chief procurement officer now?
I think it's Annie, it's Annie, Annie Sablon, yeah, that's right. Her name is Annie Sablon, and I believe that Annie Sablon.
Annie Sablon?
Yes, and she's doing outstanding for work for VAI here.
Annie Sablon. And then who's the government of Guam chief procurement?
That's Claudia Athlegui.
Claudia?
Claudia Athlegui.
So you take one person from the port, put it at GSA, and then you take someone else from GSA and put her at the port? That doesn't make any sense. I mean, because Claudia is GSA, right?
It, it happens, it, it happens.
And then, but yet, you took your, your procurement individual, that, that one was there for a while, and then you, she went to GSA, and then you brought somebody?
Yeah, yeah, ma'am, there are.
Madam Chair, can I, point of information, just to clarify, just to clarify this issue? Do you know who the current acting chief procurement officer is for the government of Guam?
Claudia. Who is he? Ah, is it? Oh, Georgie? I, I don't know, I can't answer that, ma'am.
Well, I guess publicly for the record, yes, I mean, we want to state that, the current acting chief procurement officer that's being paid for by the Port Authority of Guam, who's been illegally detailed to GSA, is your procurement officer. The Department of Administration has made her the acting chief procurement officer for the government of Guam. Isn't that interesting? It's also illegal.
Is it? I don't know.
Ah, maybe you talk to your counsel and look up the law.
Yeah, I think so, Dot, if you can bring that, because that was my next thing on, since you're already doing some research for us right now on, on something else, please include that particular, you know, find out, if you have to go to the Attorney General's office to find out that answer, because this is, this is another, another shenanigans going on, so.
That is something that will be responded to.
Thank you, Dot. And also, we talked about this, so, when, when the GM resigned and reinstated, did he collect a lump sum from his, I, I asked that earlier, but we got into something else, did he collect a lump sum for his leave?
Yeah. Yes, and I believe that all of you do too, at the end of a term, right?
Uh, no, not as legislators. No, we don't collect a lump sum.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, that was gone, yeah.
I'm not up to speed and on the latest.
Well, yeah, that's okay. But you know, do you, do you agree with that, considering that his salary and then he was, you know, they call it the end of the governor, lieutenant governor, when it's the board that basically, you know, oversees the general manager, that he should receive a lump sum and then come back with a higher salary? Did that sound right to you?
He earned his leave.
No, but yeah, sure, at the end, if he resigned, you know, but why would he resign? Most people look at that like a, you know, trying to make some extra money on this side, and the board allowing him to do it.
Oh, I never thought that was the case.
Okay, well, it, it doesn't look good, and your judgment on that, Dot, was not.
No, ma'am, ma'am, I, I would never.
Not a good one on, on that one, but I, I'm really disappointed in, in that. So, you know, I noticed too, Dr. Guthertz, you have been attending all of the, since you've been a board member, all of the meetings. However, I didn't see anything for January, March, May, and June.
I think that's a mistake.
Okay.
I think I only missed one meeting when I was off island.
No, 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 I didn't even see there, there was a board meeting. Was there a board meeting in January of 2023?
I don't recall.
Do you know if there was a board meeting in March of 2023?
I thought there was.
There was? Okay, it's not on the website. Was there one for May and June, Dot?
Yeah.
So the only one was January?
We only, I think only one time we didn't have a meeting, that was in July, because people were off island.
In July?
I think so.
How about Ju, January?
I, I don't know about Jan, I don't remember.
Okay, then why is, it's not on the website?
I don't, I'm not certain whether we had one or not in January.
Yeah, you're board member, so you would probably want to.
I know, I was off island one month, and I think that was the month I was off island.
Right, so, but the other, why, why isn't it?
We'll, we'll correct those listings, ma'am, on the website.
Yeah, it's not on the website.
Yeah, I, I know that that's a requirement, and I apologize for the oversight.
Yeah, although you have some January, and then one in March, and then May, and then June as well. So, okay. Dr. Guthertz, my, my last question was, you, you mentioned that you want to assist the port, you know, to make sure everything is in order. Yet, did you ever read the OPA's report on number 2103, February 2021, where he had other matters about the port, where he says, we became aware of, this is the OPA, you know, you're also friends with BJ, but he wrote a, a summary about the, the port, and in that, were, were you able to read any of his comments?
I'm sure I may have.
You sure you may have?
Mm-hmm.
You may have?
I don't recall the specific language of it right now.
Not sure, you don't recall? Do you recall this? "We became aware of matters not related to our audit objectives that warranted ports and possibly the Guam Legislature's attention. Example: the uniformity of existing employees, anniversary dates, and no caps on port salary increments." Does that sound familiar?
I may have seen that.
But you're not sure.
But I haven't seen any actions such as that.
For these other matters, we have the following additional recommendations, and it goes further on for that. Okay, well, you must not have seen it, because this was in February 2021, and if you, you can't tell me that you, you saw this, and you're trying to address some of the concerns of the OPA?
Well, I read all the.
Well, have you, have you addressed any of the concerns?
I read all the reports that I received.
Okay, have you addressed any of the concerns from the OPA?
My, my position is every OPA report must be taken for value, and we should follow the recommendations. That's our position as a board.
Have you, have you seen it through?
I'm sorry?
Have you seen it through?
I think we try our best to, Madam, Madam Senator.
Okay, that's unfortunate, because the board mem, the board minutes that I've been looking at, or the board that I've attended, it hasn't been addressed. It's been, it, it's just one of those, one of those, well, you know, let's just move forward and just sign off and move.
You know, I, I'd like, Madam, if I may say so, at this point, I respect your authority and your role, but I also know that I would never misuse my position on the board, or any board, in any way. And I, I'm kind of disappointed in some of the accusations and statements that have been made here today. I pride myself in my integrity and my commitment to the public service, and I think that some of this discussion today, although I'm sure well-meaning, has been presented in a manner that is accusatory and in some ways derogatory, and I, I'm very disappointed. We are volunteers. I'm a volunteer, we're volunteers, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Guthertz, and I too have a responsibility to the people of Guam who elect me, to ensure that the people who come before us, to be confirmed by this body, is not just like, it's okay, yep, you're, you're in, you know, well, we'll support you, you know, say all nice things and make it hunky-dory, and, you know, not to upset anybody, that's, that's not what I'm here for. I think the people of Guam really want us to ask the hard questions, and ask, and if they hear things, especially, Dr. Guthertz, you get people who call your office as a senator and ask you questions, and unfortunately, I don't know the answer to it, so this is an opportunity for me to ask those who are in front of us. For you to think that this is a job that's volunteer? Yes, it is volunteer. Do you get a stipend, by the way? Do you have a stipend?
We get the.
Okay, but do you get a stipend in your position? So you do get some kind of compensation?
I think under the law, there's a $50 stipend.
Right, and you get some kind of compensation. But regardless, you have a duty to the people of Guam as well, and we are ensuring that we choose the right people for the job, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Baza was definitely someone we had concerns about, and we are going to scrutinize not just the port, but everyone else that comes in front of us when there is an issue. So I hope you don't mind, Dr. Guthertz, that I am asking these questions, not just because I'm sitting up here, but I have a responsibility to the people of Guam. So I appreciate your comments as well, and thank you for wanting to step up to the port and be a board member, and it's my responsibility to make sure that we choose the right person for this job, regardless of its voluntary, but, you know, you do get a stipend, but regardless. So I appreciate your time, and I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Senator Kanata.
Congratulations. I thank you guys for your public service. I, I know this is one of the reasons why public service is kind of not wanted. No one wants to work for Gov. Guam because of these are, you know, things that we get accused of, sometimes we're not comfortable, we're put in this hot seat, and even in our, in our legislative body, right? Some people think we get leave, we don't get leave, but that's the reality. We take, we took, we took the reins, and we, we want to do good, and we want to better our island, so we volunteer our services. I commend you guys for donating your stipends, for whatever penny it is. But I just want to commend you guys for being a low-risk oddity status. This is the fourth consecutive year in a row that the port has got designation, and that's based on an OPA report, Ernst &amp; Young. So I think you guys are doing very well. I'm, I'm not a port manager, I'm not a port master. I'm, I'm not a port manager, I'm not a port master, whatever you, whatever those guys are doing down there. But I also want to also commend that you guys were 100% operational three days after the storm. You guys were pulling what no one else is doing. You guys are ensuring that our island is operational. You're ensuring that goods and services are, are being delivered to our island and our people, most especially. So, you know, with all the comments that were made earlier, I'm, I'm I'm not too sure what's, what's to come of it, but, you know, as well as myself, I want to move forward. Our island needs to move forward, we need to just pull the Band-Aid off of what it is right now and, and close the, close this chapter. Because what, we're just going to keep going back and forth on legal issues? And then guess what, who's paying for it? The people of Guam. And I also want to commend you, I know you were, I don't know if you still are, but a CUC board member?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Nonetheless, I understand the intent, that you guys were trying to save money and make sure that the ratepayers don't eat that buck. Because then again, we're going to have an issue when people start calling our offices, even though they have their own elected board. They think that the senators can fix everything overnight. But that's the, that's also another reason why we've created autonomy. We've tried to minimize political hatchets in every agency. So I don't know if we're at this point where we want to just take everything and put it in the governor's office. Although I'm a freshman, I'm just, I don't know. It seems like we just keep getting disappointment after disappointment from the port. But if the audit shows that you guys are really doing well, then what is really wrong? The port is definitely port strong. You guys ensured that the fuel was coming through the island, and you fueled excellence. So with that being said, that's all I have to say. And I want to really thank you guys for your public service. Senator Guthers, I know I had a little quarrel with you at YOG, and, you know, it's a part of it, but, you know, we just have our reservations, and, Ms. Harris, I'm not too familiar who you are, really, I did look over your packet, but I really wish you guys well. You guys have my support, and I hope you guys can do well for the people of Guam. To the whole port team out there, continue to be port strong, and continue to deliver for our island and keep our island moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Kanata, and to our two nominees today, Mrs. Harris, Senator Guthers, thank you for your time. I want to also echo the sentiments of Senator Kanata, and the progress being made at the port, I think, is commendable under your leadership on the board, both of you. And I, I am appreciative that you are willing to, as he said, step into the hot seat again to be reconfirmed. I hope that this body will move in that direction, as, you know, I've shared with the general manager and other board members, that, you know, we will facilitate here from our committee to help that process along. And we've seen this audit come out in the last few days. And I know that all of the port employees, the whole team, the board, can be very proud of four years of consecutive clean audits, low risk, becoming a low-risk oddity. And to see that the Port Authority of Guam is in a position for $12.6 million of net growth. And, you know, this speaks to what the port is doing, I think. And so, we're here to look at the bigger picture, and we need leadership from both of you to continue in that vein. So thank you very much, and I want to state for the record, Mrs. Harris, you did mention that these positions, the creation of these positions were made by the port, they were transmitted to the Legislature on May 10th and disseminated to all senators. So thank you very much for making that point, that is correct. And if anyone else has additional testimony for these nominees, we will continue to receive them to our email, the Office of Senator Shelton at GuamLegislature.org, or delivered here to the Guam Congress Building. Again, thank you, everyone, for your time. The time now is 11:14 a.m., and these confirmation hearings are complete. Sutus Massey, everyone, have a good weekend.